Welcome to your City Commission Study Session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of these options. The City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19 face coverings and social distancing, are required to attend the meeting. To attend the meeting in person, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 4:00 on the day of the meeting to reserve a seat. Seats are available on a first-come, first-served basis. If you are not attending the meeting but would like to submit comments on an agenda item to be read during the discussion of that topic, email your comments to C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Our first and only item on the agenda tonight is the Comprehensive Plan Presentation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As you all know, we've been working on an update to our comprehensive plan for about the last 15 months or so. You've all been pretty involved in that. So tonight Shelby Ferguson with our consultant, Shaki Consulting, is here, and she's going to present the draft of that final plan document to sort of the culmination of that last year-plus of work that we've all been involved with. So she's just gonna give kind of a high-level overview of the process, how we've ended up, where we're at, and then go through the goals and actions for each chapter that you've all had a chance to look at. And then we'll talk a little bit about the future land use and kind of center some of the conversation on that, but I'll go ahead and let Shelby take over.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me back this evening. As Julie mentioned, we've been working on this process for over the last 15 months or so, and you all have been very involved. We've had multiple meetings, virtually and in person, to really vet what the goals and objectives are for the city and how do we move forward to the vision that you all have identified for Leavenworth 2030. So with that, as Julie said, we're just going to review the Comprehensive Plan Framework, and then a portion of the evening, at the end of the presentation, discuss the proposed future land use map that you have there before you this evening. Within your packet that I provided, you have the current land use and then also what we're looking at as the future land use map, in addition to a breakdown of those goals and objectives, or as we're calling them now, strategies, but the goals and strategies and the local actions for each chapter. And then in addition to, there's the engagement report. I will give a high-level look at what engagement we received, or just input that we received through our engagement phase. However, that packet that you received for the engagement report is everything that we received online through the Leavenworth 2030 website from October to February. So with that, just a quick process update of where we are and how does it fit into the overall picture? Just to refresh your memory, because I know it's been a long year for everyone, so as we moved through the last year, we started with Phase 1, and we really started to kick off the project, look at what the public engagement would be, how we were going to navigate engaging the public with COVID, and then really identifying what the website would look like, what content was going to go on the website. And then we moved into Phase 2, which is really when we start to really dive into the existing conditions and the data that we could pull for your community, and what does that mean? What is your current status? Really putting together that snapshot document that we used a few times during our workshops, you know, and then having, in addition to that, the meetings that we had within the joint meetings with Planning Commission and yourselves, we also conducted four focus group meetings. And so those were made up of key stakeholders within the community. And so that really helped us shape that framework also. And then we would bring that back to you all, and then we would refine what we heard from the focus group even further. And then in the engagement piece, Phase 2 and 3 kind of worked cohesively. As we pulled more data and we got more information, we could really digest it and be able to take it out to the public. Again, due to COVID, we pushed back our engagement a little bit, and then unfortunately, we were still unable to really meet in person just due to large gatherings. But we were able to engage a good number of your community through different methods, which I'll dive into here in just a few minutes. But so we really started to engage the communities then through those stakeholder focus groups online and through Facebook. And then that brought us to October in the fall to current time. We've really started to evolve what the goals and the strategies and those local actions are and refine them, and really start looking at what those policy statements are and develop the end result of the plan. And then that brings us to where we're at now, which is Phase 5, where we're looking to move towards implementation and adoption. I met with the Planning Commission last night, actually, to go over just the draft comprehensive plan as well. And from there, we were able to receive consensus to move forward, with the exception of some revisions to the future land use map, which we'll talk about as well. But we did get their consensus on moving forward with the process for adoption. So then the engagement piece of it, what have your neighbors and friends had to say about their desire for the future of Leavenworth? And so as I mentioned, we had multiple methods of engagement. We used the leavenworth2030.com, which was the engagement platform that ran the entirety of October to February. That included multiple tools and activities that allowed people to post ideas on idea boards and then really start that conversation within the community with each other, mapping activities and survey tools. And then we, as I mentioned, we had the focus group that met four times, and that shaped the plan framework. And then, as you may have seen in some of the downtown businesses or in the local grocers, the picture to the right, that cute little girl, she was in multiple storefronts along with other representations of your community, just really driving people to the website, informing, you know, your residents to check out the website and that the project was going on. And then we also used flyers and also yard signs to help promote the community meeting that we had in January. We did have two community meetings at the end of January. And then we also had the availability of a conversation kit that was downloadable or also available for pickup here at City Hall. That was, the intent of that was to provide activities as well as what was posted on the website. It was just an additional method in which people who may not have access to Internet would be able to still participate in the activities that were online. So then just a quick stats of the website. Overall, we did have just over 1,500 individuals go and visit the website, and then 118 people participated or registered within the website. And then the remainder of those are just people who were engaged or clicked on the website. So the largest number there is the 895, and that is just people who clicked on the website but did not participate, but they did have at least the awareness of the project and the website and the tools, but they may not have chosen to participate. So then with that, just looking at some demographics, as people engaged within the site and registered, we did ask some demographic questions, nothing too personal, just overall, you know, what area of the community do you live in? What's your age? Do you live or work here? Do you own a business, et cetera? That way, just kind of, as we started to look at the participation rate, we could make sure that we were getting a full representation of your community and a clear cross-section of it, and that we weren't just having people from the north end of the community focused. That way, we could really tailor our engagement efforts as needed if we saw that we were missing a section of the community that wasn't responding. So with that, the majority of the participants lived here in Leavenworth, and we found that the highest participation was individuals aged 35 to 54. And then, as I mentioned, just really looking at that cross-section of where people lived that were participating, and so we found that areas 3 and 4, so the middle portion of your community, were where we got the bulk of our participation. But as you look at it, we did actually get a fair, an equal percentage of participation through areas 1, 2, 5, and 6 as well. So we do feel like that we engaged a lot of your community, that they've participated, that, you know, they've really given us a feedback, and that we have been able to, through COVID, still really get that feedback that we're looking for from your community, and that we got a good representation as well. And then we also just kind of looked at, you know, those who are participating, what were their, what things were most important to them. So if you look at the top four things, and this is also reflected in the engagement piece, I'll talk a little bit about, of how we shaped our goals and objectives, but, you know, the most important things to your community is the economy and jobs, having a sense of community or sense of place, transportation and mobility, and then also just restoring those and preserving the historic and cultural resources within Leavenworth. So real quick, just looking at the market analysis and what it means for your projected population and housing demand in the next 10 to 20 years and beyond. In that data Phase 2 analysis piece, we did look at any, as I mentioned, anything from existing data, from infrastructure to population to, you know, what your recreational and park amenities are and how all that functions and works together. But just for the market piece of it, we're looking at, you know, your current population as of the, in 2020 was 36,062. And then as the projections show for the Mid-America Regional Council area, it shows that there's going to be a consistent increase in Leavenworth and Leavenworth County, and then also for the KC Metro region, that you've had a steady increase from 2010 to 2018, and then that projected for 2040. And then also just looking at housing units and structure, the number of housing units in Leavenworth increased slightly from 2010 to 2018. Single-family detached and attached accounted for 79% of Leavenworth housing stock in 2018. Meanwhile, 20% of the housing stock was multifamily and 1% mobile homes. And then just looking at the occupancy rate, that has stayed and remained fairly consistent between 2010 and 2018, with a slight shift between 2% here and there, between owner-occupied and renter-occupied. The increase for renter-occupied, that 2% increase in those eight years, did shift your rental vacancy rate down to 7%. So what we are seeing is that there is a little bit more of a need for rental units moving forward in your community, but again, it's not a significant change as we move forward and look at housing demands. So then, looking at the market analysis, just our assumptions is that the population for Leavenworth by 2064, which I know is way farther out than the plan obviously is written for, but just looking at what that projection is, based on the data that we had, is that in 2064, Leavenworth has anticipated to reach the county share that the, or the share of the Leavenworth County that you once had in 1980 and 1990, which was 61% of the county's population. So that would be, result into an increase to 61,700 residents by 2064. So looking at that, though, what does that mean for looking at just the 2030? It would be an anticipated population from your current 36,000 to just under 49,000 with a high-growth scenario consideration. Now, if you just continued with status quo as current and nothing really changes, at a low-growth scenario, you'd only add about 600 residents. But that is if, in the next 10 years, you remained completely just at status quo with not much development or growth in the region or the community. Then we also look at and see that Johnson County, Douglas County, and Leavenworth Counties are both anticipated to have a steady increase. Meanwhile, Wyandotte County will steadily decrease in population, and then the state will remain fairly consistent with a 22% average of growth over the next 50 years. So then we've also found that the persons per household will increase, but it's not going to be significant. Again, that will just depend on the population increases. However, even with population increasing, you'll have more rooftops, but not necessarily larger homes. And then the net new housing unit range that would be required between 2020 and 2030 is, again, on the low end, the low-growth scenario, 100 homes. On the higher end, 13,200 is the mid-range, so. So then, moving forward, looking at just what that framework of the Comprehensive Plan is, as you all know, we've gone through this process. So initially, we sat down and we brainstormed, and we talked about what do you want your community to be? What's the vision? Establish that, and then as we worked through that vision, we really started to identify what the desire, what the outcomes were for your community, and that's where we came up with our goals and objectives, and really started looking at what those strategies and those local actions and policies would be to be able to have measurable units to make sure that you're obtaining your goals, and then therefore also, you know, hitting that vision that you have for 2030. So with that, what is the ultimate aspiration for Leavenworth in 2030? So this is the, just to recap, this is the vision that we all came up with, is that it's a place for people to live, work, and stay in Leavenworth because residents and visitors value Leavenworth's unique history, destinations, and experiences, and we're unified in welcoming and committed to making Leavenworth the best city in the Midwest, with the focus on these seven topical areas as a focus to how to obtain that, which then looks at a diverse economy, affordable housing, connections with trails, and connections within the region, quality education, accessible health care, and then outstanding public safety, and also natural spaces and facilities for people to have active living and gather in. So then that gets us to the draft plan and our framework for it. And so since we've talked about the goals and the strategies extensively in the past, I'm not going to go through each one of those one by one. Those are, as I mentioned, identified there in that packet and also in previous documents that you've received. But just looking at each chapter individually, community identity is our first one, which has subtopics within it that are historic and cultural resources, sense of community and unique attractions. So from that, we developed three goals, and within that, those three goals have six strategies and 62 local actions. And the development of that came from what we were hearing during our engagement process. We really wanted to focus on looking at more activities for the young youth of your community, and then also families, really looking at how to preserve those historical resources, how do you adapt the history that you have while being able to put it into a form that kids can understand and enjoy? And then just making sure that you're sustaining those existing community events that you have, really focusing on placing activities around the riverfront area, and then just really making sure that Leavenworth is a destination. And so all of that, all the goals, the goal for Chapter 1 is to preserve the welcoming and inclusive community that celebrates its past, plans for its future, and provides opportunities for all people. So all of those things can really start to encompass that goal and how to reach there. So we've written local actions that take into consideration what we've heard and those bullets there. So then moving on to Chapter 2, this one, as you'll see, has a pretty large amount of local actions, but we do have it broken into, it's the heaviest chapter of all of them, it's the livable built environment. That's because it has neighborhoods and housing in it, mobility, infrastructure, and utilities, public facilities, community appearance. So we have seven goals, 17 strategies, and 145 local actions. A lot of those are focused on looking at inventory of your built environment, making sure that you're keeping databases of road infrastructure, and just making sure that you're keeping up with what all of the physical, the physical infrastructure itself, and making sure that the conditions of it are maintained over the next 10 years and beyond. So from there, what we were hearing from everyone is that we really want to look at enforcing the standards of living and raise the standards of living, which includes a focus on code enforcement, connection, connecting those sidewalk gaps. You know, a big part of it is if you can't traverse your community through a sidewalk, you're limited in what, you know, residents can do and how they can get to places, because a good portion of the community is auto-centric with limited transportation, but then not everyone, you know, has the ability to have a car. So we want to make sure that people are able to move around your community. So again, that's a really big focus within this Chapter 2, is making sure that we're taking inventory of that sidewalks. What is, what areas are a priority to improve? You know, what sidewalks are maybe in, you know, deteriorating shape and need to be repaired? So that's something that you'll see there in that list of local actions. Looking at rental maintenance, you know, making sure that there's streetscape improvements for 4th Street, especially since we look at that as a gateway that needs to be enhanced, making sure that you have more affordable housing options, and what does that look like? Reducing the number of unoccupied and abandoned buildings in the downtown area, and just making sure that we embrace that, the historic neighborhoods, that, you know, demolition isn't taking place, and infill put in, that, you know, if there is the ability to restore those more historic, larger homes, that you're doing that. And then really looking at enhancing the public transportation and options and modes for that, and making sure, again, as I mentioned, you know, that high-quality road infrastructure. What's the condition? What's the priority? What priority areas do you need to improve, and at what point in time? Any additional, you know, you have a good amount of real estate left that can be developed, but you also have a good amount of areas that can be infilled. And so focusing on that infill and what does that look like? Does it make sure that it fits within the fabric of, you know, each neighborhood or even the block? You know, so you're not putting in large McMansions next to a smaller, you know, single-family home, just making sure that, yes, things are newer, but also that they're consistent with what is in the surrounding area. Improving those gateways, as I mentioned, they're along 4th Street to the north, and then K-7 to the south. And then just looking at, as you look at the transportation piece of it, you know, how do you improve the access for health care, especially with your health care options shifting a bit? You know, now that individuals may have to travel further outside of town to their services, how do they get there, and what options do they have? And then just looking at, you know, as we look at the code enforcement piece of it, you know, are there any property maintenance items that need to be taken care of, and how can you, as a city, incentivize some improvements for those properties, and what does that look like? So then, looking at Chapter 3 for Harmony in Nature, we looked at natural resources and sustainability. We created two goals, three strategies, and 21 local actions. What we really heard from the community is looking at preserving green space, making sure that we're creating places for people to gather, making sure that, you know, you continue to support the storm water management program that's been very successful, just making sure that that continues to move forward, and ensure that your services, you know, continue to move forward with the excellence that you already have going on with it. And then just really looking at, as I mentioned, you know, creating those spaces to gather in, looking at how you can provide more community fishing areas or garden spaces, incentives for native plantings, what does that look like within your code and your, and your community, and where can those be placed? Just to make sure that you are keeping green space, that you are, you know, really just making sure that you're keeping your natural resources within the community and not overbuilding, so. Then we have Chapter 4, which was economic activity and workforce and jobs. We have two goals, three strategies, and 34 local actions. What we really heard from the community here was that, you know, there's a big push to be innovative and flexible, to offer things to employers and to bring more businesses in. What does that look like? And that requires being innovative in your process, your recruitment, being flexible in what you do bring in. Providing trade and workforce development programs, this is something that we heard a lot, especially through the community meetings, is that, you know, we have the focus of, you have your business and technology park, how do you fill that? What do you fill it with? And so really focusing on that, the technical, technology, trade sector, you know, we've also talked about a few times, just that the metro region is starting to see a shift in the, to the professional science and technology sector. That's something that you can really utilize and capitalize on for your community due to your proximity to the region and also the airport. Really focusing on that trade piece, how do you develop programs for your skilled workforce? And then looking at all of those things of how that will be able to retain students and also existing residents, but also bring in and create future, new residents for yourself through those employers. And then finally, as we look at Chapter 5 for the Healthy Community, it encompasses public health and well-being, public safety and recreation and leisure, with three goals, 10 strategies, and 47 local actions. And similar to what we've already mentioned, you know, we really heard that more activities, more businesses and things for the youth to do, families to do, offering programs more, more businesses and things for the youth to do, families to do, offering programs to aid through mental health and physical health, that, again, that preservation of green space, gathering places, connections of trails and parks, really looking at what amenities you do have within your parks. We heard a few instances where people said, you know, "The parks are great, but there's just not really much to do within them." You know, "There's a restroom and a bench, but, you know, what else can you do to program it? How do you get people there? What do you, what do you need within it?" And so again, the goals that we've set up for that chapter really focus on, you know, taking a look at what your amenities are, what your trails can look like. And again, just that connection to sidewalks that will connect right into your trails just so that people can, you can ensure that people are able to get to those parks. Once you've established those great amenities, you want them to be able to get there. So looking at those sidewalks again, and then just, you know, one of those programming amenities that was thrown around a few times was, you know, looking at community gardening, especially for, you know, the aging population, that can give them something that allows them that active lifestyle and gets them out of the house and it's something to do that's outside. So, you know, looking at what that looks like for your community and, you know, how does that transfer then over to your farmer's market? You know, what, what kind of, you know, how can that evolve from just being a community garden? You know, what uses do you have for it? And then really looking at that riverfront and making it more accessible and embracing this, this great water asset that you already have just right outside your front door. So that brings us then to land use, which has one goal, three strategies, and thirty-eight local actions. The, the local actions also include anything that was policy-related in the other chapters, and those have been carried on into land use, as that is something that would be a code adjustment that we want to look at impacting land use. So then looking at land use, currently you have seven thousand two hundred and six acres, and a big majority of it, about forty percent, is single-family residential. So all the yellow there on that map is a current uses are single-family, followed behind that is green space, conservation areas, and then public, public semi-public uses, and then you've got about six hundred and ninety acres that are vacant or undeveloped. And so that's, you know, where you can start to look at, you know, how do you infill? What do you do with your, your future development and move that forward? You have six point four percent is commercial, and then so on to parks, industrial, and then your smallest use of land is for multifamily residential. And so you do have that map there in front of you, which then, just a quick overview, you know, ninety-five percent of your, your land is developed. Again, you have that six hundred and ninety acres, six hundred and eighty acres of undeveloped land, and then over the last year, in 2019, your permitting did drop some in the residential side, but, you know, that is anticipated to, to rise again, and obviously you have that real estate there that you can continue to develop and, and look at what that will mean for your permitting as well. So then it brings us to the future land use map. As you'll see between the two, there is less conservation, more single-family. And so what it does for the comparison here is you're looking at that increase, about sixteen percent increase of single-family residential, a decrease in conservation and open space, and then so flip-flopping your conservation space and your public, public semi-public, and then, you know, taking some of that vacant undeveloped and that becomes single-family residential, it becomes public space, and then really looking at that some of that increase then is also commercial. And then two point one percent of it is an added land use, which is there in the pink, and that is for mixed use. The big majority of it, you'll see, is placed in the downtown area. The intent is to encourage mixed use in the majority of the downtown area, to really focus on that mix of commercial on a lower level and then residential on the upper stories, just to really make sure that you're getting that good mix of bringing people to downtown and ensuring that they stay, and just making sure that you have a vibrant and active downtown area. And then also I do want to just point out that even though the conservation, open space was decreased, and a good portion of it, as you'll see from the map, there was more green space down in the more southern, southwestern portion of, of your community. It has turned yellow to single-family residential developments, but as one of our local actions within housing and neighborhoods is we have written in that we want to, you know, see moving forward that developments require a percentage of those developments to have green space within them. So while by the map it looks like you're losing that space, there is still that opportunity to retain green spaces, and also what that does is allows you to get that park space, those trails, connections throughout the community as well. So with that, I'll leave it for questions. I do want to mention one thing that we, we did discuss, and I would love to hear your thoughts on, is last night we talked about with the Planning Commission, this portion up here along Metropolitan, instead of leaving that as single-family residential for the future, more transitioning that to be commercial and mixed use, just as those single-family homes there start to deteriorate and become demolished, that as you look forward to the future, that you're going to start to have more connections through on, on Ninety-two to the west, there with your, your larger, newer commercial area there at Fourth and at the Fort entrance, really just capitalizing on that and moving that to the west as well.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
But so with that, I'll, I'll open it up for discussion or questions.
Just one clarification, I think you erased Leavenworth High School. Right in the middle there, down, that should be blue.
Yeah, and that was my fault. It was, they'd shown a little bit too much land area for it, and so I had them change it and it got all taken out, so.
Oh, okay.
There were a couple little things like that that I noticed, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, right here, that, that is right. So it's here and over here to the, the west of it, we had originally identified additional public semi-public in that area in case there would be an expansion potentially, but then Julie and I talked about it, of turning it single-family, so yes, we will revise that. Okay. So yes, our revisions then would be to put the, the school piece back in there and then potentially change the Metropolitan corridor to, to red and/or with a couple nodes of mixed use there, potentially at Tenth, and I believe it was Seventh.
Yeah, kind of between Seventh and Tenth would be the area we talked about most with the Planning Commission with that commercial and/or mixed use, kind of extending that way.
Right.
So what did the Planning Commission think of, think, were they the ones who brought it up or did you kind of tweak them?
Yeah, Shelby and I had talked a little bit about that before and then brought that up as a discussion point with them last night, and they agreed that, yeah, along Metropolitan, with that being a major corridor, and you know, the traffic volume that we have up there being across from the fort, and with the new prison that we're going to be getting, you know, there, there's certainly not going to be a decrease in people in that corridor, so just really capitalizing on the folks that we have up there and, you know, bringing in services and whatnot that will, you know, be useful in that area.
Particularly between Seventh and Tenth?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because there are a lot more houses along the southern part of Metropolitan, the further you go west, obviously, so.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense to put more.
Can we get a, as commissioners, could we get an elect, the digital copy of the slides or at some point? The digital copy?
Yeah, of what Shelby had tonight, this presentation.
Was that, I don't think that, yeah, that, yeah, the presentation.
Yeah, I can get that to you, yeah.
Just the digital copy of, of those slides, which were very good.
I think I'll have more questions after I look more thoroughly over this.
I do have a comment, which is good that you brought up, you know, the growth in this, uh, single-family residential that you are keeping in mind, because I think even over this last year, more people are outside, but to make sure we retain green space in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that was one of the bigger discussion points with Planning Commission, too, and like Shelby had mentioned, one of the action points would be for us to potentially revise our development regulations to require that of new developments. A lot of cities do have that type of requirement, that a certain percentage of land be dedicated to open space or community amenities, that type of thing, and we just don't have that right now. So moving forward, taking a look at that, how we can incorporate that into our new developments that we have coming in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you go back to the slide, first three or four, talked about houses from one hundred to thirteen thousand two hundred? I want, I don't know if I completely understood that.
Sure.
So are you saying, between now and 2030, if there's slight growth when you have a hundred new houses, if there is a good amount of growth, thirteen thousand two hundred?
Yes.
Between now and 2030?
No, between now and 2064. I apologize, that's.
Okay, twenty sixty-four. But even, I mean, that's, we, what do we have? Ten thousand rooftops in town, approximately? Twelve thousand? So this is more than double it. But you say we, to accomplish that, we're going to have to annex, because we only have six hundred and forty acres, right?
Six hundred and eighty.
Yeah, yeah, less than seven hundred acres, and we can't get thirteen thousand two hundred rooftops on seven hundred acres unless we annex.
Well, and that, I mean, you can look at that as, is that single-family rooftops? Is that, you know, are you looking at that those units are also multifamily? So, you know, with that, the addition of the, the mixed use areas within downtown, that helps you really start to be able to have more, more units within a smaller area, increases your density and there also, so.
Still, I still think hit that, that bigger number, we have to look at annexation. I, I just don't see Leavenworth saying, let's have a bunch of, you know, ten-story apartment complexes, and, you know, I mean, do the math on it, if we have less than seven hundred acres, I mean, thirteen thousand two hundred at maximum growth, it's going to be pretty densely populated. And I don't think Leavenworth wants to be like New Jersey. Yeah, that makes people, no offense to you.
New Jersey's a lot more than the New Jersey Turnpike, that's all.
I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about population density in northern New Jersey.
And that is something that, you know, we, we look at is, you know, what, what is your potential for annexation, you know, and, and that is one of the goals written in there is, you know, to, as you do start to see that, that development, you know, increase, as you do see your population and the need, you can start to really look at that annexation piece of it. You know, within that also, you know, you want to make sure that you are utilizing what you have within the community, you know, first, of course, but then that you are, as you annex, you know, being mindful of, of what that looks like and then how that's funded for infrastructure. So we've also written that in as a local action, is that funding will be required, you know, through, through the developer for infrastructure costs as, as seen fit, and only to annex when necessary.
So the comprehensive plan as you have it right now, in terms of if everything was to go great between now and 2064, thirteen thousand two hundred housing units, what, how's it written in the plan right now? Would we have to annex or, or could we do that within the existing geographical boundaries of the, the city? Or do you need to check that?
I, I would need to confirm that, but looking at it, I mean, for what you do have available, yes, you would need to start looking at some annexation.
I think that's important that, you know, just check it, I mean, for us to, I mean, we've taken notes, but I think it is, that is an important aspect of that particular metric.
Well, that, that's forty years from now, but also tonight, just on the news tonight, they were talking about the growth that is happening in the Midwest, and especially with weather circumstances in the south and on both coasts, that we're going to be seeing with more people not having to be where their office is, they can go anywhere they want to. So they really are expecting a lot of growth, so it's something we need to definitely keep in mind as we look to our future.
Well, we're experiencing some of that growth over the last year, year and a half of Leavenworth with all these housing permits, all these houses that are being built, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're seeing that happen as we, as we speak.
I think we'll see more of that.
Affordable housing. Any other?
I'll just, I, I'm really, in terms of your plan, in terms of engaging the community, I have to give you the highest marks, particularly with the challenges of COVID-19, so just from one city commissioner, I think you did a fantastic job in terms of how you engage the public and getting feedback from, you know, different portions of the community, but not just taking one method, but using a number of methods to get that feedback. I, I do appreciate that, and that's what makes this plan very, very valid in, from my perspective. I do think, I, and I'm not going to get into the specifics here, but in terms of the strategic goals, the goals that you have, which are really strategic goals, as I went down and looked at the actions and some of the strategies, I kind of walked back and thought that some of them might be just refined a little bit. For instance, on the, on the first one, we said, preserve our welcoming and inclusive community that celebrates its past, plans for its future, and provides opportunities for all people. When we get down into the actions, we, we talk about historical preservation, cultural preservation, so I was just thinking that, you know, we, we could do, tweak that goal to may preserve our historic, comma, welcoming and inclusive community, you know, blah, blah, blah. So I would just ask to take a look at what you've got in the, in the meat of the report and just kind of crosswalk it back to the, the strategic goals that you, that you have there, because the strategic goal should, the language should encompass, at least from a general standpoint, you know, the actions that you, that you have in the plan.
Sure, we can do that.
And I, and I can, I can provide, either the city manager or Julie, kind of, I did a little of that, a little bit of that work yesterday and today, so I can provide you some input there, maybe save you some time.
Yeah, I would say if you have any specific comments that you've kind of worked on, you can go and send them to me directly, anybody, and I'll get those to Shelby.
Yeah, good.
Go back to some of your map, go forward again.
To the, sorry, to the land use map?
Yeah.
There we go.
Same one I have here.
It is, yeah.
And one of the things that, that I saw, and part of the feedback I may give you, Ms. Hurley, is that, you know, we do have, and it's captured various places within the, within the report, but this whole, I'm not sure it really stood out, but this whole history and situation we have as far as good relationships, particularly with our, well, community service organizations, but particularly our federal partners, you know, in terms of Fort Leavenworth and the United States Penitentiary, and I did see more on Fort Leavenworth than the, maybe the Penitentiary, and then the VA Hospital Eastern Region and the, and the headquarters being up there, but that may be one area that I give you a little feedback on. And there may be one or two small actions, but it just didn't really grab me in terms of, because I think that is one of the strengths of the, of the city over the decades. over the decades and for a long time, and I'm not sure we emphasized that enough.
Okay.
With a new veterans home and a new.
Yeah, exactly.
And a new prison, federal prison, that's going to.
We've got a good track record in terms of having very high quality and interchangeable partnerships with these federal partners. And so I just thought that that might be an area that could be tightened up a little bit.
Good comment. Anybody else have any comments tonight?
One thing I think we need to think about a little bit. We just recently saw Lansing deny a multifamily project.
Yes.
And what I've heard from the development community is you want new businesses, you want new jobs, you want new amenities. Where are the workers going to live before they can afford a house? We have a lot of single-family here and not a whole lot of multifamily. I think the commission needs to think about our acceptance or look ahead for multifamily development. Because if multifamily starts coming in, high-quality, good multifamily projects for young families and people just entering the workforce. And our land use map has a preponderance of single-family zoning or single-family use, then there should be, could be a little bit of a conflict there. So just a thought.
Stressing the high-quality part.
Right, with a lot of businesses, I mean, we're stressing a lot of, you know, 15 an hour jobs, which is a good wage, but, you know, that's not enough to buy a house when you first start out.
Right.
And high-quality multifamily is probably something we need to be thinking about.
Good, good point.
I would say one thing, yeah, I agree with that 100%. In terms of the, I don't know what chapter it is, but it's Public Safety where we talk about the police department and the fire department. We talk about the police department, we talk about personnel recruitment, personnel training. I think we need to take a look at the C and just incorporate equipment in there. I mean, just in terms of, we spend a good amount of time looking at a life socket replacement plan for our vehicles. And the information technology is where I'm really talking about, you know, we've had to deal with that over the last two, three years as far as additional storage and things like that. So I'd ask you to, just to take a look at that, I think we could be maybe a little bit stronger. And I, it was consistent, training, the personnel recruitment, but I didn't see kind of the word in there of equipment. And it definitely includes equipment. There's something else in that, but I can see in a moment here.
Yes, sir.
So I believe this is one, and one of the feedbacks that you received from one of the public pertaining to providing trade and workforce development programs. Is this more so working with the community colleges, the city partnering up with the community colleges?
It would be both. It's actually, you know, we have an action written in there to work with the community colleges, but also within the school district as well. So that, you know, that's initiated early on to provide them what options they do have following high school.
That's good.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, that whole workforce development area. And I did see that in the report. And, you know, for us, I think it's just really putting some emphasis on that and just doing as much as we can with our partners, right? As far as the workforce development. And we've got, and the universities, both universities, University St. Mary and also Kansas City Community College.
Well, and just identifying the needs of the companies, too, in that.
And I know with, at least nowadays compared to back then, you know, Leavenworth High School does offer, which is great, young people to go over to Kansas City Community College to learn a trade if they don't, and they'll have that when they graduate instead of going on to college. So that's a good start.
Yeah, I think there's a fair amount of that happening within our community and city, and it doesn't get a lot of visibility, but I believe it's been happening for years. And it can even get better as we go forward.
Yeah, and I'll look deeper into the action items within that, but I do believe within there, too, part of it is, you know, the outreach portion of it, the education piece of it. Not just the collaboration with your partners, but making sure that residents are aware that that's an opportunity for their high school students. Or it's an opportunity as, you know, a 20-year-old who is trying to find out what their way and what they want to do, that there are these options out there. So I'll confirm, but I do believe if I'm remembering the section correctly, there is a local action step for that of the promotion of that workforce development program.
The other thing in terms of economic development and growth, of course, workforce development is very important. And we talk about bringing new businesses in, but, and I think you've captured this fairly well, but I would just say, just maybe double-check as far as the retention of business, of good businesses that we have in Leavenworth. And I think you've probably covered it okay, but a lot of people just think, well, we've got to bring in new businesses. And we do need to bring in new businesses, but we also need to sustain and help set the conditions for the existing businesses to get better and to grow.
Yes, and you're right, we do hit on that, but I will just make sure that we do have everything that we would need for that. Because we do, we do see that as very important and valuable to your community is to retain those businesses, you know. What incentives are there, you know, what can you look at of, you know, how to be able to help those businesses, especially in the time of, you know, COVID? And when we've got limited capacity or, you know, full shutdowns, you know, and preparing for that also in the future. I know we've written that in there as well as just, you know, putting together, you know, plans for how do you help those businesses moving forward? Should future, you know, emergency issues arise, so.
And I have one other thing, just, there's a lot of actions with respect to surveys and things. And some of them are kind of maybe the same thing in just a different section of the report. But I do think, if you just take a look, because we've got to be realistic about, I believe in surveying, and I think we can probably do more in that area. But it seemed like there were a lot of surveys, and I think, you know, we're not going to be able to do, we just need to be strategic as far as how we're doing those surveys. And that's all I'll say, I just saw a lot of actions and.
Yeah, and there are, like I said, there was a lot of those, you know, the 145 local actions for the built environment, because there is a large portion of, you know, surveying, you know, very specific things. But we can, we can definitely comb through that and identify, you know, what's reasonable, you know, also what may be a more priority over, you know, certain other ones.
Okay, sure, thank you.
But we definitely want to make it, you know, there on your radar as something that's, you know, to continue to move that infrastructure improvements and also your transportation, mobility forward. You know, those are, those are things that you may want to consider and to evaluate, so we'll look at that again as well.
Sounds good.
Do we want to set a timeframe for getting me comments to get back to Shelby, so they have time to work on that before we bring it back for adoption, a week or?
A week would be good.
Yeah, that's fine.
So by the day next Tuesday, if you have anything you want to get to me, I'll get to Shelby. And we can talk about a realistic timeframe for them to kind of get everything worked in, and then we'll get it back to you for adoption. And the Planning Commission did request last night that when it comes for adoption, if it could be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, just so that they're here as well to, you know, kind of have that discussion with everybody.
That would be really good, that would be really helpful.
So we'll work with Shelby and then Carl and Paul to get that scheduled here as soon as we're able to get that final document prepared.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great presentation, Shelby.
Thank you, and thank you for your time this evening, great feedback. And, yeah, we'll, I'll look forward that to any comments by next week. And then also I'll get working on just the few things that we've already discussed, and we'll get something turned back around for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can you say hello to Ms. Sheila Shaki for us, too?
I can do that, I will tell her.
I'm a little surprised she didn't join us tonight.
She, I believe she is listening in, so, so, yes, so shout out to Sheila.
Hello, Sheila.
She's been, you know, working behind the scenes a lot with me on this, so, so, you know, a big thanks to her as well, so.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kramer, anything else this evening?
Uh, no, I don't.
We have our goal setting.
Goal setting will be Friday from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Riverfront Community Center. That is open to the public, we'll have public seating if anybody wants to attend that. And we'll go through our goals and see how we did.
Great.
Will they need to reserve a seat or?
Uh, no, there's plenty of seating over there.
Commissioner Griswold, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a quick update, I looked at the stats that the county puts out on Monday, and still looking pretty good, the community test percentage. 2.6, 2.69% of people tested positive, which is just a little higher than last week, about 0.10% higher, but that's still pretty good, it's in the green area. And then I think on the number of, 14-day moving average for community cases per 100,000 population, it's down to 57.49, which is a decrease from 63.60 cases, so that's going in the right direction. I think that's right on the yellow, the yellow line. So that's good, hopefully that'll continue. I know a lot of that has to do with people getting vaccinations. And Commissioner Leanhart, are you going to talk about the vaccination? There is a.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll let you, I'll let you talk about it then, because there is a clinic tomorrow. The only thing I'll say about vaccinations, I think the county's doing pretty good, up to, as of Monday, almost 24,000.
He's stealing your thunder, it's all right.
Well, she's going to talk about tomorrow, but as of Monday, last Monday, there was 24,000 people that have been administered the first dose, which is about 30% of the county's total population, all ages. And I know the younger children won't get vaccinated for a while, but still, I think that's pretty good progress over the last several weeks. But that's all I have.
Do you want to follow in on that?
Sure.
You brought it up.
So, yeah, let's see, tomorrow's Wednesday, so you can get the first vaccine tomorrow, the Moderna. And also they're offering the Johnson &amp; Johnson as well, and that's from 10:00 to 8:00. And then on Thursdays then is, if you get the Moderna, is the second vaccine. But once you get the first one, they'll give you a card for your appointment time.
Right.
So, and always just check Leavenworth County, Kansas, their website, they update that, the Health Department does with the times and dates.
It's going to be hit and held with the Riverfront Community.
Yes. 10:00 to 8:00 tomorrow.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything?
I'm trying to pull up this flyer real quick.
I'll wait, I'll wait on you, I'll go ahead and, Commissioner Price here.
We were, many of the commissioners were involved in making a short video for the citywide cleanup earlier this evening, which is Saturday. We don't have an official kickoff like we've had in years past because of the COVID situation. But there are teams going out, families, church groups, service organizations, or just groups of friends going to certain areas of town. Please be careful when you go out and if you see people out walking along the streets, and this weekend, be careful as you drive around. And it's a great event, helps the community quite a bit. And as I've always said, I hope at some point in time that we don't have to do this every year, that the amount of trash that people pick up will just, is absolutely amazing. And so 90% of it is probably coming, just somebody drives by and throws it out of their car, and it's unbelievable what you will find. Hopefully that can stop, but I'm not so naive as to think that it will immediately. Thank you, but please be careful this weekend and have fun doing it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, and please forgive me, Sagasu, but go to Sagasu's Facebook page and you'll see that there's going to be an Easter egg hunt this upcoming April 10th from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. Please go to their Facebook page and you'll be able to see the location of the event.
Good, good, that's good. That's really good, I'm glad to hear that some people are having Easter egg hunts this year. I don't have anything to add, just encourage everybody to get your vaccine, it is important, it is important. If we want, if you care about your neighbor and you want to stop the spread, you'll get your vaccine. Thank you, and are we adjourned? We are adjourned.